I'd like to call the order this December meeting of the RSU 25 School Board. You would all please join with me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Josh, would you please be kind enough to take the role?
Yes, Mr. Paulson.
I am here.
Mr. Burgess, President.
Mrs. Boston.
I'm here.
Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Nealon.
Here.
Mr. Wenmore.
Here.
Mr. Goff.
Here.
And Miss Atherton Davenport.
Here.
We are all, but it's in God. This is the time for public participation. If you would like to publicly participate, we can do so. We do have a beautiful little crystal podium up there if you would like to come up. If you are not here, but you would still like to publicly comment, you can do so at publiccomment@rsu25.org or you can phone in with public comment at 307-8099. Seeing today, no one is lining up behind the podium. We will move on to adjustments to the agenda.
So I almost made it through one meeting without having an adjustment, but at the last second I had to put one on there. We have just one nomination, Elizabeth Martinez. We're going to be added in for BMS Special Education teachers. She's been a long-term personnel for us, but we'll just be moving into, we'll be looking, ask you to move her into a full-time role officially. And the only other adjustment I'm just kind of asking is that so we have a couple of trips on here for coming up for approval. One of them has some students that are traveling back from an indoor track practice. And so just if they're not back when that item comes up, we can just keep sliding that down the ranks until they get here. So they could just be part of the presentation if those are okay with that.
No. Next, I would look for an approval of minutes.
Do we approve the minutes of November 19th regular meeting?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Adam.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought I saw you out of the corner of my eye.
Thanks.
All right. Next, we've got communications and correspondence.
So the other communications I have for you is actually the documents I gave you prior to during the finance meeting. So you have copied the audit and then the letter from the auditor themselves, just to the board. Just kind of explaining, and again, we were pretty happy, and this is the FY20, remember the FY23 audits, and we are now just starting FY24, but we're happy to finally close the book on this chapter officially with this printed off version for you, and that's what I have for communications.
Super tense.
So you have my report. Again, it's hard to believe how fast this year is going by. We are now well into winter sports, and as you know, there's a girls' basketball game going on down in the gymnasium right now. And it really is flying by. So we've got wrestling, basketball. We had a concert last Friday, so it was just great to see lots of different events going on. Also, be looking, and I will send it to you folks via email, a link to it, but there's a video that is coming out, so Maine School Management Association has partnered initiative called Maine Loves Public Schools, and they're highlighting a lot of the good things that are happening around public schools in the state of Maine. And they actually sent a camera crew here about a month and a half ago. Actually, they were here while we were at the conference this fall. And they got the videotape, come in and take a look at what's happening in our art classroom. Some of our honors are our students, and they also went down to look at the robotics program. So they are putting together a couple of different videos. Mr. Ward actually highlighted the first video for the art class on the Facebook, the high school Facebook page. But as we get all the other ones out, I will pass them along. It was really good to have them reach out to us to be one of the select high schools that they want to highlight in their Maine Loves Public Schools videos.
Any questions for Josh from his report? Board chair report. As Josh had already mentioned, the winter sports are out. Exciting set of boys' basketball games here. Girls got to cheer for the first time. So, and there will be a cheering competition coming up soon. Also, the robotics team is hard at work down there. So there's a lot of exciting things that is happening this winter. Under committee reports, we've got curriculum.
We met just last week. We have changed our meeting time to generally align with Aspire, but they didn't have Aspire last week. So we started our first meeting at the right time and unfortunately threw some people off, but wrong week, right time. So in our meeting, we had Aaron give us a little video clip from Healthy Academia's Catch My Breath in response to an uptick in vaping issues that we're having in the school. We're going to be releasing that to kids through five through 12, grade five through 12. And Jess Carter, our health teacher, will be partnering with them, Healthy Academia, to teach that. And then Christina went over the draft of the K through 12 PE curriculum and K through 12 art curriculum. And just kind of showed us, you know, the collaboration between those departments. And they came up with some really nice documents. She's planning to bring that probably in January to review with the school board and hopefully approve. And then Josh shared district updates with us, which included a draft of the school calendar for next year. And we got some things to think about because he drafted, he mocked up a couple of them. And there was one we kind of liked better than the other, but it's kind of a weird split. So tough to say what would be best, but we'll figure it out. We're working on it. And that's, our next meeting date is actually not going to be January 2nd as we planned because we're pretty much going to be on break until our next meeting. So we will start our meetings up again February 6th, I think is the first Thursday at 6:00 PM.
Six.
Yeah, right after Aspire, but Aspire will be meeting in January, so don't miss theirs. If you're going.
Finance Committee, that right before this meeting, discussed the regular budget to actual, the senior center and food service, as well as discussed the audit, which you all have copied. Questions? Finings?
Policy. Policy Committee did meet. We continue to work our way through mandatory policies and others and review those policies and make any adjustments to those as necessary, bringing forward at least three tonight. And it looks to have reviewed policies that require coaches.
Facilities?
Facilities, we met Thursday, December 12th. I was a little bit late for the meeting, but I guess I've been in there in time for anything to give us an update on how the building's faced the windstorm that we had last week. I reported there were no issues that I know of. There was one. So the visiting teams, bleachers on the football field. Got fully updated, flipped over the fence and let it down to the track. So we damaged pretty much beyond repair. So we are working with the town because of our relationship as to which insurance is going to cover it. I think that we buy a lot of it up, but their insurance will cover a lot of it. So we just, we have to go through our schedule to see if it's covered.
Is there any damage to the track itself?
There was a little bit, but I think it's. What's that? It was like some small divots in it.
Didn't take it out.
No, just kind of, just a little.
Not mission critical.
Yeah, something that we get, but we didn't take care of it. And the fences, you know, the fences was pretty, obviously, which is kind of looked over. But we've gotten really good at replacing fences over just past summer, so we'll take care of that internally.
Are we allowed to just let the visiting team stand?
Yeah. Do we have to provide them with bleachers? Yeah, there is some ADA stipage out that you have to make sure you follow.
All right.
We do need to, before they use the track, we do need to remove the bleachers. Yeah, so we won't.
Do you think that will be mostly covered by insurance?
Yeah, yeah. And I will say, we got those, we got those 2007, that those were purchased, and they're not cheap. I mean, I think we used to have reserve money at the time, and I think it was like $23,000 for that set of bleachers. Twenty years ago, so you could at least double that cost of what it's. So that certainly would be an insurance thing. The bleachers on the practice field by the soccer, those also got, there's a small bend to them, but we're not, that's something that we're going to be able to take care of. Fix, so.
It was quite a wind.
It was. Honestly, I mean, that's a big cost, obviously, and big damage, but I mean, I didn't know, as a hardy guy with the blow, I really didn't know what goes next when we come in that next morning. And so that's all we really ended up with. The porta-potties at the soccer field, those took a little bit of top, those were a good mess for somebody to, the company to come and take care of.
Was, is that the set of bleachers that we, we put a new set in and we had lawsuit or the town did?
So.
Did the original set, so it's important that we have good quality.
Because the old wooden ones that people used to put.
Somebody got hurt on those.
Correct, yes, that there's, you want to, and again, just for, you don't have maintenance, and it's just their longevity, you want to have the metal wooden ones that we have now. Anthony did share with me that he plans on putting cement beds down so that it can be anchored. Yeah, so that won't happen again.
Wait, they weren't anchored at all?
They were, but just not yet.
Are you saying?
Yeah.
Just so they wouldn't. And the president happened before.
Well, I mean, they've been there for a long time. It just, and again, it's not like they're.
They probably warp over time and.
Yeah.
Maybe that's.
I think once it gets going, it's like a tumbleweed, right? Like, once it turns, it gives the momentum. It must have been impressive to see that.
So then we were. It was made out of aluminum, aluminum soccer.
It's aluminium.
So then we were updated and discussed the ticket ID system again. There was some discussion from people like Verona and Orland, who wanted to know a lot about it. And it was really a good discussion. Now, Steve Ferguson of BIMs has done a walkthrough inspection of the new boiler for commissioning. And he had no issues, right, Josh?
Nothing.
So, and then Port Lightning has completed the stage rigging upgrades for the Klein Auditorium facilities. We'll be meeting with Marcus on January 6th. That's going to be our next facility meeting to discuss and prioritize more auditorium improvements. We discussed a few FY26 capital improvement projects, it's usually the same three. And they're, Anthony fell top of the list with the Miles Lane windows, the middle school, bandroom carpeting, and the high school science wing windows. And like I said before, we're going to be meeting on January 6th at the Klein Auditorium itself. To discuss issues and the future improvements. And that's it.
I went to a middle school drama parents' meeting, and they mentioned they love the curtain.
That curtain actually was pre-treated with fire retardant, so we won't have to keep spraying it every, what? Periodically, two years or one year. So that's going to save money too.
Any questions for the facilities? HCTs?
We met, we have our annual breakfast meeting that was put on by the students. Actually, three bucks for the students to take the calling, of course. And it was, it was excellent, a great breakfast. Well, I didn't have much, but the, because I didn't have breakfast, but what I did, that was great. And they were making omelets to order and, you know, it was really nice. Our guidance counselors and principals from all ascending schools were invited to this, and RSU 25 was very well represented. Bill Tracy just did a presentation highlighting recent accomplishments of each program. It's to educate our guidance counselors and the principals that are there at the monthly meetings, what's going on there. And that's a, I'm just amazed at what's going on in HCTC.
See if he can do a presentation for the boards.
What?
He can have, they should do a presentation for the board.
Each program.
Which is built.
I mean, the.
There was a video, there's a video that they did last year that we. I can reach out and ask Tracy and see if there's some, we can look to get in some information. At least there is the video, so we can try and look at those links out, but see if we could come here and do a presentation.
The presentation that he did at the MSBA thing, he said that he'd be happy to do a presentation about that stuff as well, which would be really important for us to learn as well.
Yeah, that was the crosswalk that Mr. Ward presented past meeting. As a matter of fact, I have a copy of the academic crosswalk. Everybody would like to take one. You can see what courses are offered and. Like, oh, we can get credit for what I should say.
So Scott, I know, like, the nursing program, and that's like really competitive. Our, our, our programs that are maybe more conversant to become just better. I don't know, but it changes from year to year. I'm trying to think which program is down a little bit right now.
So you have your newer ones that are, so we just started, I said, they just started the carpentry program. That's how it's, that's how it's over at Summer Memorial High School. So it's very similar to our Walton program. And they have just a morning session right now, and that one session is doing well. One is a new program, sort of building numbers, and two, kind of some of the same, some challenges that we've had, even though ours has been really successful, people have to give up. Like, we have two students that are going to that program right now, but they travel to Summer, they do the carpentry program in the morning. They don't get back in time to HCTC to catch the bus back to us just because else they don't want to be there for like an hour. So they actually have to do their academics at HCTC online. So it creates some challenges of just for the student having to know that they're out of the building their entire day to be part of that program, and some people are just not.
Is there a way that, or promote schools like Lexboard or something that the actual school that has been sent to pick up those additional classes?
They, oh, they do. That's, that's what they do. Yeah, we have.
So they go to Elsworth High School.
Right now, they do it at HCTC, they're going to go to Elsworth High School like in the afternoon. So they will register for their core classes and basically do like a remote pathway, but they have an academic advisor there at HCTC that will help them with their, so they still get their academic. The tough thing is, they must, they're going to really want to do what they're taking to HCTC because they're giving up coming to school here to go to another school for that year, or maybe even two years. So it's, it's, it's a tough thing. It's changed too, because back in 94, 95, my son went to HCTC, and he stayed all day long. Yeah. Because we, one of our biggest issues is transportation, the time wasted in transporting kids somewhere. Is it Darryl Stonington, their students? They're there all day. Their day, wherever, anybody from Darryl Stonington, they're there this whole day. Cybersecurity, I think, was down a little bit unless still trying to get some of that. And then we have their new program, Business and Hospitality. Yeah, they changed the name of that, and even law enforcement was down a little bit because that's been maxed right up for two years, and now that's down just a little. But they are adding.
Fluctuates.
Yeah, they're adding two programs next year. One is a fire science that will be run at Elsworth Fire Department. So students will have that, there's a paramedic and a fire science course that they will be able to take through that program. And then the other is a medical assistant program that's actually going to be run at Buckford Regional Health Center. So. So any students here, that's really easy. Right. Two of them, they can use the meals that, when they're. Fire. They are. Yeah, fire science, they're going to sell there, they'll get out. Yeah, they've already talked about having. Be there for parts of it. So we'll have to wait and see how the numbers, for those programs, they seem like exciting programs.
With those, like the paramedic and the fire, fire safety, yah, 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 will that just be like, they get two years out of the way and then they have to do stuff? Or is that, but they can come out with that as something they can do later?
There's just like in all the other programs where they can get certifications while they're in there. And then based on the program or how long they're in there, the different types of certifications that they will get. But they, they are working, I believe, with the MCC to get some enrollment opportunities for them so they can get credits there as well.
Cool. I have one thing I didn't mention, if I could. I did reach out to Ryan Stackpole, and he accepted, and he is now on the curriculum committee. And I just wanted to report that out because we talked about it last time. So he's the person that ran against Scott, and we wanted to get him engaged and involved. So he did come to our curriculum committee.
That's great. We, it's really good to have representative people who are.
Yeah, and he was excited to be there.
Yeah, told them, you know, come to some meetings and see what we do. I appreciate that.
Right, so for old business, we have none. New business, resignations and retirements, looks like there's none.
Nope.
Which is great.
That is very, it's good, we don't have any of them.
But under nominations, you have got a list.
Yeah, so again, the first one for teachers, again, Elizabeth Martinez is one that we brought on. So she's been with us all year, working as a long-term sub for special education. She actually came to us from another state, new profession. We were waiting on some certification, just issues just because of coming from another state and trying to get the certification. So because we didn't have the certification right away, we couldn't give her the teacher contract. We hired her as a long-term sub. We now have a certification, so now we're bringing, she's been with us, she won't really know the difference other than that she'll have the teacher contract and is eligible for the benefits of a teacher. So, but she's done a very nice job for us, and my recommendation that we move her officially into the teacher contract. And then we have Johanna Stiles for outdoor track assistant coach. Last month, you approved her to be the indoor track assistant coach. She's done a nice job for us. And we had the outdoor open, she interviewed, and when he thought, I mean, that it was just a seamless transition to move her to the outdoor, but I have a whole slew, and I would be more than happy to read them too, if you like, but you have them in front of you, volunteers. I don't know how much room we have in the shop, if all these people show up and help out with the robots.
How does that work? I know.
I would say that if you go in there, most of these people are not there in every single night. There's some of them that are very consistent, that they're on a regular basis. But there's a lot here that they're only able to come in at different times or have certain expertises that they will bring that they're for. And, but I'm doing competition, staying in the stands. Yeah, yeah, you can only have so many people. Right, you don't have pens.
I wish there was more interest in the body.
How many students do we have involved in for, it might be a one-to-one.
Less than the volunteers.
So the, I see there's some female names in the volunteer list. Does that mean that are these ladies old enough that they would act as chaperones?
Yes, yes, so that's, and I said, we try to get some.
Good question.
Some, or just because they do travel so much, and to make sure that we have, have some coverage there and we will be able to, because again, you know, I think one of the best parts of our robot program, I mean, obviously, we have great success, but it's how much representation we have, both male and female on that team. I mean, it really is a great, great representation. And so it's good to see this many volunteers to be able to help out, especially when we're traveling because they have so many overnight events.
Ready? Well, I need that we accept the nominations as presented.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? This time I actually looked over here.
Thank you.
Peripheral vision is going, I guess.
Good.
All right. Next week, consideration of possible action or allowing the BMS Outdozer to attend an overnight trip to AMC. And I'm going to totally murder this thing, so I'm going to let you tell me what it is. Lodge.
Metal Whistler.
There we go. Yes, I'm willing to agree with that.
I reached out to Dr. Tripp, and I'm not sure what the timeline is. I put together a little presentation if it helps you guys with some visuals, but I don't have to do it. You have all the information that's pertinent in front of you, and you've gotten it all. But if it's helpful to you to kind of see the place and the map of where this is.
You did the work.
I was going to, I needed to.
We always pictures.
I needed to do this anyway because I'm going to like have to pitch this to the kids if it's approved, and it's good for me to just have that, so why not?
Why not?
These are the middle school codes. All right, so I'm not going to, I'm not the kind of person who's going to read every single word to you, but just the gist of it. So this is Metal Whistler Lodge, this is in, I believe, I don't know if it's technically in Kakajo, but that is the closest like, like, this is actually in the Hundred Mile Wilderness. I don't know if it's technically a northeast pescataquist, that's not really a township, but anyway. This is two separate trips, one in January, one in March. They're both going to be the same exact trip with the same itinerary, so just for ease of use, I just kind of combined them. So a little bit of background, the Appalachian Mountain Club has something called the Journey Fund, which I became aware of when I attended the Teens to Trails Outdoor Leadership Conference in September. And a representative from the AMC was there, and he said, hey, we have this great program. You can apply for a grant of up to $5,000 if you are a Title I school or you have 50% of your students receive free or reduced lunch. We are a Title I school at BMS. So I decided to apply, and we were awarded the full $5,000 to be used in this 2024-25 school year. That grant money can be used for lodging, transportation, food, and gear if necessary. I'm not going to read all this to you, but in large part, I believe that they awarded us this because of the work that I kind of put in with admission, revision, and values. And for me, what this is really about is getting kids outside, having them get opportunities that they wouldn't normally get. That's something that a really nice AMC lodge where they might not even know how to cross-country ski. I can work with them here on the trails, so teach them how to cross-country ski, and then maybe they can go hit the trails in a part of Maine that they've never seen before and have an experience that they wouldn't normally get with their families. So, and to me, that's life-changing. That's where kids maybe think about a career that they can go down, or maybe it just makes them feel better about themselves. And so that's really what it's about for me. This is Moosehead Lake. This is Second Roach Pond, which is where the lodge is. And we zoom in a little bit. Here is Kakajo, and we're going to go down this road here, and then there's Metal Whistler right on the banks of Second Roach. Here's another bavvy that you can kind of see here from Greenville to Metal Whistler. It's 27 miles, about an hour to get there. So we're looking at two and a half, three-hour bus ride potentially to Greenville, which I'll get him to, and then another hour. So there's a lot of travel, but a lot of good downtime as well. And you can kind of see here, these are all groom ski trails that we can do, and there's lots of other smaller trails that we can utilize as well. I just couldn't get the imaging to get in here. So lodging, this is at Metal Whistler Lodge. This is fully staffed in the wintertime by the Appalachian Mountain Club. It is very nice. We will be in a private 16-person bunkhouse if it's approved, split between boys and girls. There are different rooms in the bunkhouse, in the bunkhouse itself, so we can split boys and girls up with that and have chaperones supervising each group. It is heated by wood stoves maintained by AMC staff. Bathrooms are on site and hall linens are provided. Meals will be eaten in the common dining area of the main lodge. And we've also secured the basement of the main lodge as a private common space for just our middle schoolers so that we will not be interacting with other guests, and we can also be a little bit louder and not worry about disrupting the goings-on of the rest of the lodge. Here's a picture inside the bunkhouse where the kids would be staying and chaperones would be staying, and you can kind of see the bunkhouses in the layout there. Here's the main lodge, so we have that basement space, and this is the main dining area. And you can kind of see the buffet-style breakfasts that we would get included with the trip. For meals, students would be expected to eat breakfast at their homes before we go, so we can save a little bit of money there. We probably have enough money to get lunch provided by the AMC if we need to, but if we can get school bag lunches, that's probably just as well if it's within reason and within the budget to work that. But I haven't gone through all those details yet. The AMC will provide an entree, super salad, and dessert on Saturday night, fully paid for, breakfast buffet-style on Sunday morning, and then they will provide bagged trail lunches for us when we are out on the trails, either cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, or hiking. And then we will be home in time for dinner. Students will bring their own snacks, and if we have any money left over from the $5,000, I'm thinking we might have about $200, $250. We could use some of that money to buy some snacks for the group as well. And you can kind of see here the view of the pond or lake, and there's some cross-country skiing happening there. We'll be spending three to four hours outside each day. This is a winter trip, so the expectation is that these kids who sign up will be spending time outside and that they will be cross-country skiing or snowshoeing. This is like mandatory, they're not going to like stay back inside. This is not what this is about, this is about getting outside. Luckily, we have cross-country skis, boots, and poles for all that stuff at BMS. I've got an inventory, we have enough for all the kids who would go. We also have snowshoes and snowshoe poles to use as well. If we need any additional gear, because I'm registered with Teens to Trails, we have access to a company called Main Gear Share Nonprofit in Brunswick, and they have tons of outdoor gear that we can utilize for free because we're registered with Teens to Trails. More detailed winter gear, clothing, and packing lists will be provided for students as well, so we ensure that all students are safe. Transportation, this has been kind of a nightmare. I've consulted with Dr. Tripp, I've consulted with Mr. Chambers. This is rural Maine in the wintertime. I have driven these vans to and from places all around the state. I am not confident in these vans. Mr. Fraser saw me when I had a battery issue in one of them. I am not confident in these vans. Um, Mr. Fraser saw me when I had a battery issue in one of them. Uh, when I was going on a sunrise cycle with some kids. Not the best time to have battery issues, but we made it. Um, and so I'm a little worried about taking the vans and so is Mr. Chambers and so. We thought about all the ways we could get around that. Um, school bus was mentioned. I think that's probably the best option. However. The AMC is worried about school bus being able to turn around at the lodge site. Even smaller bus, they're worried about in the wintertime doing that. The good news is, all the lodging and meals, we still have nine hundred dollars left over from the five thousand. Um, there is an outfitter, Northwoods Outfitters. In Greenville who does shuttles. This is what they do all winter long and all summer long. So they're used to this. They can handle the roads. It's forty dollars per person, um, which puts us within the budget. So we can do that. So we take the school bus to Greenville. Um, get dropped off there, transfer it here to the shuttles, take the shuttles the extra hour to Metal Whistler and then do the reverse on the way back. Which I think is probably the best case scenario for everyone because I'm not driving and I don't have to worry about that and these people know what they're doing. So. Um, hopefully that's all good and well for you guys. Um, any questions about transportation?
No, I have a question about the lake. Do you guys think to stay away from the lake?
Yeah, we're not going on the lake. There's no ice fishing or anything happening there. We're just gonna stay on the, on the trails and stuff. So I do want to do. Ice fishing day um, here on Silver Lake where we have good ice. If we ever had it. Um, that's something I wanted to do last year, but couldn't get around to it. So hopefully we can do that this year.
If there's no snow, will you be hiking? Is that what you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll be doing something.
Cause March, who knows?
And I can also find with Main Gear Share, I can probably get some micro spikes and um, if your kids don't have them to make sure that they're safe. With the icy conditions, because there probably will be some ice at least. Um, I plan on bringing thirteen to fourteen eighth graders. I teach eighth grade. I'm not gonna take kids on a trip that I don't really know and I'm comfortable with. And they don't know me and the chaperones. So I'm only gonna take eighth graders, um, six or seven boys, six or seven girls for each trip. Um, that's a total of twenty-six to twenty-eight students. Uh, I will be going on both trips and then. Either one or both of, depending on how many students decide to sign up and what we need for chaperones. I have two female chaperones willing and ready to attend, the eighth grade math teacher, Miss Upporth, and the eighth grade science teacher, Miss Murphy. Um, who've both done chaperoning with me on overnight trips for the camping trip we did last year. Um, and they've done a lot of outdoor club stuff with me before as well. So they know the kids as well, which is good. Um, selection of students, because this is a Title One. School kind of thing, why we got this grant, I will be prioritizing those students. So I'm gonna basically present most of this stuff to the kids and generate a interest list. And then I will consult with Miss Dicky and see which kids potentially she might recommend. Um, based on for your reduced lunch status or other factors involved. And I know there's some. Um, you know, privacy and stuff with that. So I'm not gonna get like full names of lists of kids who qualify for that stuff, but just. General recommendations, I think, for Miss Dicky about what kids would qualify or could potentially be in the mix for that. Um. And uh, if I don't have enough students, then that makes it easy for me. If I have more than the number of spots, then I'll generate a waitlist. And if they're all kind of within that priority range, um, then I'll kind of go to the next tier of selection, which will be. Have the kids participate in outdoor club throughout the year and are they committed to doing this stuff and have they shown interest throughout the year? Not just a one-time thing where they want. To go to this nice lodge, right? Um, is this like a real-life choice for them? Um, so that's kind of how I decided to do it. Um, and then they're also, this place can take, the whole facility can house seventy-nine guests. Um, I don't know how full it will be, so there will be other people there. Just full disclosure, it's not just gonna be us at the, at the lodge or the, the facilities. Um, so we will do our best to make sure our students are safe with, in the bunkhouse, in the lodge, or on the trails. And we have a really solid um, ratio for chaperones for this trip to students as well. So I'm not too concerned about it. Um, plans for safety emergencies, we're gonna have um, one school-issue first aid kit for each um, chaperone. As well as all the pertinent uh, medical information of students that we need to, if they have Epi pens or need Epi pens there. Or any medication they need to receive, we'll be ready for that. Um, I've talked to AMC. They will give us uh, the wifi password for the lodge. In case we need it for emergency and contacting parents or district personnel. Um, there's also a landline if we really need to use it for emergency. Uh, I'm gonna make a list of um, local hospitals and anything if we have breakdown, talk to Dr. Trip about that. Making sure that we have barrages that we can contact in case there are any issues at any point or anything like that. Um, safety expectations will be reiterated throughout the weekend. We'll make sure we pay attention to kids. This will be outside for so long. Uh, make sure that they're warming up and that they're not um, dealing with exposure issues. Um, and I'll also have the emergency contact information for each student and plan on communicating with parents while I reach my teach. So I'll be able to text them directly as well. And that is it. That was a lot of me talking. Um, you guys have any questions for me?
I got, I got a couple. Um, first, I'm very excited about this. I think this is a great idea. Um, but uh, just had a couple of questions, but just knowing my own children when they were that age. Are, are we gonna possibly bring a few? Extra warm clothes just in case if somebody shows up like my middle son in his shorts and.
Yeah, I, I always, even when I'm hiking, I've got a bigger backpack for that reason. So I always bring extra, even if it's just a normal height. Bring an extra layer, extra mittens, extra hats. So I always have that stuff and I do usually need it because kids don't come prepared. For this particular trip, I'll probably make sure that. I've communicated with the parents and say, do you have this? Like, make sure you go through the packing list with your child. Make sure they have everything. Um, I know we'll be doing bag searches for this overnight. So not that I'm gonna go, go with your stuff, but that's a good opportunity to say, hey, make sure you have this, you have this. Do you need anything else? Kind of last minute stuff. So before they actually get on the bus.
Okay, and, and are you, are you leaving yourself ample discretion on if? Someone signs up and you know that they're not really serious about this? That you giving yourself enough leeway that you can say no to somebody? That like, like, I mean, this person just wants to go because their friend is going, but they have full intention of sitting there playing on their. I.
Well, the good news is there is no.
They won't have any reception.
So the only reason why they need their phones, and this is hard for me too, because like, these phones are their cameras. I mean, this is the way they defend stuff. The days of them having a digital camera or something or long. They'll have their cameras, but they will be able to be on the phones.
I, I don't want to have your chaperone tied at the lodge because the person is afraid of the snow.
No, that's why he's gonna have Mrs. Dicky and.
Yeah.
Kind of go through everything.
The nice thing is that I've, he's left, I feel that he's left himself a little more. Confirms that if, if he has concerns about people showing up for a fair variety of reasons. You know, it's always tough. I, I mean, if he has sixty people sign up because of tough decisions and it's not a reason not to have a trip like this.
But if you, if you know.
What you're gonna be party about.
I've never been willing to go outside.
Yes.
And, and now I'm signed up for the trip.
Yep.
Are, are you gonna like have a nice heart-to-heart with this person again?
This is the good part about taking kids that I know. Um, I know what I'm getting involved with. I know these kids are all in a, they're all.
Which ones are serious?
And it sounds like the expectations are set from the beginning.
And I'm gonna go through the process. So like, if this is approved tonight, I'm gonna present this to the kids this week so I can generate the initial list. And then I'm gonna reach out to those parents and say, hey, this is what your kid is interested in. And really go through the whole vetting process and, and make sure they, they know what they're getting into. I know the parents are committed, not just the kid being committed to it. And a lot of kids who might sign up. You know, might have something going on that weekend and so it really kind of whittles down. And the good part is, I have another overnight trip planned for actual camping in the spring. We have tobogganing. We have a fully paid um, ski day at Black Mountain through Teens of Trails and Winter Kids. For nine students to attend. We have local stuff that we can do here with study and cross-country skiing. So it's not like this is the only thing I can offer. I can take, you know, twenty-six to twenty-eight students on these two trips and then another like maybe ten on the camping trip. That's like half of the eighth grade. So I feel pretty good about that and getting all the kids involved. So I hear what you're saying. Um, I'm gonna do my best to vet all of these students and talk to the parents before we get there. Under, unless there's an emergency. A kid's not gonna be staying in the lodge and have one chaperone tied down with them. Obviously. Okay. And if I need to take three, if, if the board's more comfortable with me taking one or two less students or one less student so I can take a third chaperone. I will absolutely do that. Anybody else got any questions?
I think it's a great opportunity. As you mentioned, if uh, some kids, it could be life-changing to get. Out of civilization, be away from the wifi. Any involvement in this.
Yeah, thank you for applying for the grant.
We'll bring board games and they'll be good. There'll be a lot of like down, you know how dark it gets pretty early.
It's dark.
There will be a lot of time to, to talk to the kids and get to know them. And that's the, the best part of these trips is to actually see them gel. And I would look for a motion.
I moved that we allow the BMS Outdoor Club to attend an overnight trip to the AMC Metal Whistler Lodge in Kakajo.
Second.
We, we have a.
Uh, is this for both dates that he had projected or do we have to do another one in March?
That's what covered both.
Okay, great.
That's what I was hoping for.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? As you announced. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate what you guys do. Thank you.
Because it's the same exact trip.
Okay, just like differently.
And you have the itinerary there in detail. So you can see exact breakdown of what I'm planning to do with the kids and what they're doing. Obviously, that might change a little bit, but you can kind of.
Thank you, Mr. Roger, very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a, if I don't see you, have a great.
You too.
Thank you.
Happy holidays to you.
Next, we have a consideration of possible action on allowing the DHS History through sports class. Intend a overnight trip to Massachusetts and New York to visit the Baseball Hall of Fame. And the Fenimore Art Museum in college business. That's clear in his Yankee sweater. So feel free.
Brave man wearing a J's you other way.
You want me to put it up on the?
Run around.
On the.
The form or?
You don't have to, it's just a form. Is that what you have?
No, it was uh.
That we have the planning about.
I talk about that in the last one. We threw out the first page, by the way. I'm gonna find something.
Yeah, very.
Alright.
You're brave of you to come in with that. I don't think we can approve this.
Listen, we can't deny the students just because Mr. Jones has poor taste in.
You know, and that can be respected even if your team can't. So, so I teach um, US History through Sports and it's, it is um. Sometimes it will run, we usually run the course every other year because we, I teach uh, AP US History also as well. And the things that I cover in this particular class. Uh, in this US History through Sports, uh, I cover the Olympics, the history of the Olympics, how it got started. Um, specific issues of the Olympics, the tragedy of nineteen seventy-two Olympics in Munich. I also uh, teach the history of baseball and the competitive leagues that uh, attempted to make inroads. Uh, with Major League Baseball. Um, Women's Baseball League in the nineteen forties. And uh, and Title Nine and the impact of, of on women in sports. Um, history of American football, we. Um, and, and, and television and the impact of television on sports. So. Several years ago, we did the same thing. We took a trip to Baseball Hall of Fame. We took a trip to. Um, we also did the um, the Basketball Hall of Fame also as well and we. Mixed in a trip to, to um, University Springfield College. And uh, I can't remember what the other school was that we visited. But this year. Uh, the date of our excursion would be uh, March nineteenth, which is a Wednesday. Uh, so we'd leave uh, early in the morning Wednesday and be back on Friday. Uh, we would go, we would make one stop, um, quick stop at the um, at the Springfield uh, for the Basketball Hall of Fame. And then uh, proceed to Cooperstown. Um, and then spend the night there and then in the morning, get up early, go to the Baseball Hall of Fame. Uh, we would then um, after spending several hours at the Baseball Hall of Fame. Cause you need a lot of hours to actually uh, see this particular museum. Then we'd go to the uh, the Fenimore Art Museum. Um, and then on the way home, um, we would visit either Holocross, Clark, or Worcester Pauli. Um, Institute in Worcester, Mass. So all three of those schools are generally right in the same area. Um, so. Um, so day three, Friday, leave in the morning, stop at Clark or Holocross or WPI. Um. Cost. Cost per, oh, and the other thing I did want to mention too was that our trip. Uh, our trip to the Hall of Fame would greatly enhance the curriculum that I have already covered. Uh, in my US History Sports Class, that the integration of baseball, which we've just been going over. Uh, Women's Pro Baseball, they have separate sections dealing with areas that. I'm either going to cover or have covered already in the class. And being able to visit one of these schools, either, you know, WPI, Clark, or Holocross would, you know, give the kids another. Sort of work at another university that they, you know, could be interested in to see what is sort of out there. Um, the cost per student uh, is four hundred eighty-six dollars. Um, cost per chaperone, it would be myself and Jen Scala, um, who are um, the chaperones for this particular trip. Uh, that'd be four hundred eighty-six dollars. We requested an amount of five hundred dollars uh, for district funding. We'd also, uh, we're, we're planning to raise money uh, through either a bake sale or a bake sale and ball tribe. And uh, donations. We have uh, plans for safety emergencies, obviously medical kit, emergency sheets, numbers for all students, dump the trip. On a speed dial, which we have already used before last time we went. Uh, plans for communicating information to parents and obtaining parental permissions. First, permission slips will be sent home. Um, if all parents agree to group, chat will be used on the trip. And or Reach My Teach. Um, accountability uh, for student conduct and students to sign up protocol conductively. And in fact. I have four of my students here, um, who are um, in the class. And are excited about the possibility of, of going on this trip. So. Um, this is something that, that I've done before and it was very successful. Um, kids who went had a great time. Um, and to see things that I have covered in class, I am really excited. Um, about baseball and about sports in general and I, I would. Uh, this, would say that this class is probably the most excited when it comes to the things that I've covered in class. And so. Uh, being able to uh, you know, to, to take this trip and allow the kids to see things that we've covered in class. Um, you know, the plaques, the people who have covered, um, would be just a great enhancement. Um, for them and it would be admirable. I mean, you're getting an opportunity to go to the Basketball Hall of Fame. And the Baseball Hall of Fame. This is a trip that I'm sure these guys will remember for the rest of their lives.
Well, I'm envious because I have never been to the Baseball Hall of Fame, or the Basketball Hall of Fame. I've always wanted to go.
Just go, Scott. You're retired. Maybe you should, can we make him sort of, he's like the first chaperone? At like, at least next year. Let him, let him go next year.
I will say, just to clarify, the district funding that Mr. Jones um, had requested is through the um, College Career Access Team. Used to be called us about my team. So they have funds set aside specifically to, what's that?
Aspire.
Aspire, right. Uh, but the team specifically at the high school has their own set of um, funds that's. Um, that's what we have a fund to correct, just measure that. Um, are set aside specifically for.
Such a rare.
Oh, right. So this isn't, it's not just local money that we're taking out of the supply lines. Money that was set aside specifically for this type of activity.
And then if your fundraising is extra successful, you may not need all that. Is that what that means?
Yes.
Yeah.
Chris, now, now, now this is just a question from me understanding because. Beginning of the year, we had a talk about attendance. Because this is class and school related, it counts as the.
It's school.
It's all good.
It's not true.
Right, so, so we're not, we're not giving you a problem with attendance.
They are, they are attending a school.
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah. We are adult.
We're gonna need a report when you guys get back.
Yeah.
So Chris, can you set up a tour? You're just gonna ask me to do it here.
Well, so last time we planned.
Well, so last time we planned, we, we did, we had someone set up a tour. And the problem was, I, I mean, I knew more than the person who was giving us the tour. I mean, I'm not saying that just because, it was just easier, I think it's easier for, I, I would do that if I clearly believed that we could see what we needed to. But the problem was, the person took too much time. Um, and so we didn't, we had to rush to get through the rest of the museum and we didn't have an opportunity. And so Jen and I actually discussed that we didn't want to do that because we'll get to see, I can, I can do a better job than, than what the kids are.
You'll be your own docent.
So you. Yeah.
You'll get there when the doors open and have all.
What's that?
You'll get there when the doors open.
Yes, I, yes.
And then just for me, the people start joining your group.
Yes, I want to be there as, you know, when the doors open, so we get the full. We can, because this is not a museum that you can just see like in two hours, you really. In fact, I, I thought in talking to Jen that what we probably do is get there early, see the museum, get lunch, go back and, and visit whatever we missed and then, and then get through the Fenimore Museum.
Yep. Chris, how are you gonna determine which college to visit?
Well, we haven't really, I don't know, I haven't really decided on that yet. I, I mean, I've been to Holocross. Yeah, and I, I thought Holocross because I'm just, you know, their, their facilities are phenomenal.
Again, will that be something that you might have a tour of?
Yes, that definitely, and I didn't want to make a decision. Yeah, I didn't want to make a decision until we knew that whether or not we, this would be approved. And then as soon as we did, then we could start making arrangements for a tour, which we did when we went to Springfield. We had a full tour and at the other university, I can't, just, we had, we had another tour also as well. And it was great.
So the Baseball Hall of Fame is a lot bigger than the Basketball Hall of Fame? Because I've been at the baseball, basketball, I've never been to that.
Well.
It's a two different.
Yeah, Jen, both Jen and I, um, we can do it in an hour.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you have the knowledge in your head.
Well, I'm, look, my specialty is baseball, basketball, and I know, I'm, you are probably not going to spend more than an hour to an hour and a half in the base, in the Basketball Hall of Fame.
Yeah.
Because the, the exhibits just aren't as large.
Not as much history.
Yeah, and it just isn't as, the exhibits just aren't as, but there's some cool stuff there. I mean, the, the uniforms and the basketballs, you know, there's.
It's more of a visual thing than a.
Yeah.
But you're trying into American history.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
You know, and, and certainly with the integration of basketball, you know, there's some, you know, there's some stuff there like the New York Rens. You know, there was an exhibit for that, art basketball, um, all black teams, so there's, you know, there's some big stuff there. Yeah, absolutely. Same thing with, with going and watch, you know, to the Baseball Hall of Fame.
Right. And they grow, you know.
Yes, absolutely. Rube Foster, we want to see Rube Foster and Buck O'Neal, we want to see those plaques. And so I talked about Jackie Robinson, what we're, we're going over that right now.
I gotta give you some props though, because if I was a betting man, between the ski trip and the trip to the museum, I would not guess that you would have student interest to the point that they come to a board meeting. And that is awesome to me that you've created that academic interest and passion there.
Well, this was the thing that, I mean, I'm not saying it's just to say this, but I was telling my wife this morning, um, actually before I left, that these guys, when I go over stuff, are interested. I mean, they're, they're not just taking the class, I mean, there is some true interest. Yeah, and they, they ask me questions and they're, they're fascinated about the subject that I'm going over.
That's good.
Yeah.
Are you taking all of your students or are you?
Yeah, there's.
Everyone's taking your class is giving you an opportunity to help.
Yes, absolutely.
Good. When is spring sports done?
Well, we made a decision that we would go just before spring sports started.
This rate around looking close to it.
What is it? Yeah, so I wanted to make sure that there wasn't any, any conflict with the baseball.
But if, if there's some reason that they couldn't go or didn't want to go, it wouldn't be a reflection like in a grade or anything like that, but.
Yes.
It's just a small enough class.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if it's elective where we get to.
Yeah.
Provide that up there.
Okay, any further questions? I will look for motion.
Okay, well, I, I move that we allow the Basketball High School History Through Sports class to attend the, um, as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Well, we, I have one more question. I'm sorry, I'm just looking over this. So we are, we're not really providing any financial stuff to this. Because I do see all the breakdown, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
All the money set aside.
I want to clarify for Keith. No, I was, no, I, no, that's not you, but I, I wanted to make sure, like.
The kids, the, the kids are committed to, to raising money for this.
Great.
Yeah.
Maybe.
No, that's it, I'm sorry to derail, I just.
I want to do it too. Um, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, Fenimore Art Museum. What's that?
That's an art museum and it's right for Cooperstown.
What's in it? Like sports stuff?
No, it's art, it's actually art. No, it's not sports art, Dan, it's actually.
No, Dan.
So it's.
You have one of them already, okay, go ahead.
So it is a, it's just a, it's an art museum, so.
Tied into your class?
Well.
Or just an extra?
It's, that's an extra. It's just an extra thing, and the fact that it's in Cooperstown.
Okay.
And it's a fine art museum. Um, and I, it is, and, and I am a, a proponent of sort of, I guess if you want to call it stretching the kids' minds, they are opening their eyes to something a little bit different than just.
No kidding.
Just sports. Right, because I, look, I, I am a lover of art and if I can hit an art museum, I'm, I'm going there.
Yeah.
Alright, and I, I don't know if the kids have been to an art museum.
Yeah.
But if I have an opportunity to take the kids to see an art museum, I'm doing that.
Right. Alright. Any further questions? Alright.
No, I'm good.
And I would, I would ask for a vote, since we've got a motion and a second. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
I'm great.
I hope you guys all have fun.
What?
Oh.
Yeah, I know you.
Next, we have consideration of possible action on the VHS indoor track. Qualifying athletes to compete in the New England competition on February twenty-eighth. Do you mark for us in Austin?
So this is our annual request and we put this out early without really knowing who is going to qualify or if anybody will qualify. Um, but we want to make sure that you folks have the information and, um, because when they do qualify, we have to move fast in terms of facilitating hotel rooms, transportation. And in fact, we actually will often get a hotel room in advance and then cancel it if we don't need it.
Right.
Um, so it's just, uh, doing our due diligence, um, and it's one that you've, um, graciously approved in the past for us to send our athletes to. I can't give you a number of students, because I, we brought some numbers in there based on what we think could happen, but. So, but it, it's an opportunity that we have provided, um, to students in the past, um, and I think it's something that I support us doing in the future, where we always have to.
Yep.
Yeah, just preemptive measures.
I move to be allowed qualifying students to go to the indoor track, uh, New England competition, February twenty-eighth through March first.
Second.
And we've got a motion and a second.
Northeastern.
That's New England.
Yeah.
All of him?
Yeah.
We still had some discussion. That is, that is unanimous.
Who is long and go to the.
Alright, next, we have consideration and possible action on qualifying VHS wrestling teams to compete, stay overnight as needed, March seventh to March eighth in Providence.
So same, same gig. Same gig, except we're in Providence, um, and, and again, last year we had, we do expect to have two to three wrestlers that will qualify. Last year we, we had three.
Yeah.
And, uh, we expect, those, all three of those students are back actually, so we expect there's a good chance that we would have people that will be looking and qualify to go as well.
Where in Providence?
Uh, I don't remember the, what, is it the college or is it the, the big? I don't, I don't remember. And I'd say, if I say. It's the big, yeah. And what I will do. If we have people that are, that do qualify, um, in a subsequent board meeting, I would, I would update before. The details to it.
It's good to get this out of the way, though.
I mean, that's.
There are no other, for these, there are no other competitions that would require overnight stays, like for states or regional?
No, so it's just a way they happen to be located, so like last year, uh, I believe the regions were at Fort Kent. So we had, we had, there's actually three different approvals for last year. Uh, there was one in Rumford for the, so our regional ones and the state ones were in Rumford, and so that we had to leave.
Oh, the Rumford one was early, yeah.
But.
So we might have more upcoming, I saw we just do a blanket one and you cover everything.
No, I don't like. Basically, when I talked to Mr. Magus, he said that where the locations of those terms are, they don't.
Oh, okay, good, good.
The other two were actually in-state competitions, they still had to stay overnight just because going to Fort Kent, like going out of state sometimes, they're gonna get out there, when you start to have lanes at eight in the morning. You know, we put our wrestlers at a disadvantage, you know, leaving here at three in the morning to have a, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah.
Alright. I will look for motion.
No moves.
Go ahead.
No moves.
Okay, alright, second, again, second, all those in favor? Yeah, thank you. Next, we've got first reading of policies.
Yes, so you have three policies here that, um, I try to give you an explanation, um, for those, some of the changes in my report, um, looking through. So the first one is BEDB, which is the agenda, uh, policy. Um, so there were some additions here, uh, or recommended additions to this policy. Um, first, again, just basically that when we have a, um, emergency meeting that we have to, to call for the board, um, that will give the agenda as early as we possibly can. But sometimes we have to have an emergency, depending on the situation, we may have to have an emergency board meeting that evening or the next evening.
Sure.
And getting an agenda out, I could argue within the forty-eight hours that we have version in our policy. So, um, this is basically just kind of giving us an exception to the rule.
And the forty-eight hours was just a policy decision, it isn't a state law, right?
Correct. Although it's pretty standard, I mean, they do have cross, cross the board.
But, but we're not, we're not by, by giving ourselves an exception. We're allowed to give ourselves the exception, it isn't that we're violating something.
That is correct. And then. Um, and again, there's just some verbiage in there that was really speaking about, um, documents that we put in board packets, similar to the lights on the doctors that I actually given you tonight, is that, um, sometimes there's confidential documents that are not eligible for Freedom of Access Act. So someone cannot put in a forward request that are part of the board packet. If that is the case, we would mark them confidential. They would not be part of your digital packet that you would give, we would disseminate that here and most likely be collecting it back. Um, and then we would house it at central office, and if you folks need me to see it again, you could just come to central office and, and see those documents. So this, again, policy just says that, just because I'm giving it out to you at a board meeting doesn't mean it necessarily has to be public information.
So those might be like things that we would do in executive session and.
Yes, yeah, but sometimes there's things, and I think, you know, the letter that we got from the auditor to use an example of that, said it's a letter that is specifically to you, uh, that speaks to things that are not necessarily public, um, records. Um, so. Again, it's, I very rarely do we ever have any of those types of things. I think one of those that we have annually is our safety plan that we talk about, like that is a confidential document that we don't want out there because of, um, safety concerns, so we would mark that as confidential, we would make that available to you, we would pull it back. Uh, the second policy is BEDH, uh, public participation at board meetings, uh, we had some grammatical changes. Um, again, specifically to emergency meetings, there is public comment at emergency board meetings, but that public comment can only be towards the agenda items at the emergency meeting. And so, again, right now, when we have our public comment, people can come in and they have their time. It doesn't necessarily have to be specific to the agenda, but at an emergency meeting, it has to be, um, for that agenda item. Uh, if it's not, then the board chair would then gaggle it down or read it, who would go through. Um, it also allows for written comments to be submitted, submitted for public comments. We actually do that through email and, and so you kind of keep track of that for us, but they could submit written comment prior to, that could be read out loud. Um, typically, the board chair would read those public comments, we have them ahead of time. Um, we have had in our cop, public comment, the three-minute time limits. What we did not have in our public comment was an overall time limit to the public comment agenda item itself. Reason that is important, and again, it's not something that we've really had to deal with, but regular board meetings have agendas that they have to get through to conduct business for the school system. Um, we cannot have a two-hour public comment period and then only leave ourselves a half an hour of time to do, do the rest of the business, and then we'd have to have another board meeting afterwards. So, um, it's important that we restrict that to the thirty minutes so that we can conduct the business. Again, we're not trying to restrict people from speaking, it's just we need to be able to conduct, the, the board needs to be able to conduct this business.
It's just a little where we add and people can, uh, give their time away to other people.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so other places out there, if you have three minutes, you can't say, I'm gonna speak for one minute and then I'm gonna give, um, my other two minutes or you can speak for five minutes. And the other language we had in there was, that stuff was, wasn't a full rewrite, but, um, like we can group comments together. So if everybody's speaking to the same thing, so like, I think the one, one we had was the public comment around, remember when we made the switch to AM and football?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, we, you know, we chose not to, but we could have, if we thought it was gonna go too long, anybody that's gonna say the same opinion, you could group all those together and there's just one, so we don't have the same opinion going over.
So they have three minutes to make their argument, all of them together?
Right.
If you decide to do that.
So if we had a long line of people here, we would have a sign up, we would try to group them together the best that we can, um, so that we stay inside that period. Again, we're not trying to restrict people's opinions or ability to speak, but just making sure that we get all the buried opinions out there and have a chance to speak and move our meeting along. And then the last one, BEDJ, broadcasting, there wasn't a whole lot here, um, changes, basically just, we're using some old recording, so, but that policy used to speak to, uh, having like cords and wires of video cameras and, um, most people don't record with video cameras, they require people to plug in any voice, their cell phones. Um, just reminded that you actually can record, you know, the public can record our meetings. Um, but they can't do it in a way that would disrupt the meeting, so they can't be up moving around all the time, trying to get different angles. Um, it also, I said, because we do have the access to have the opportunity to do remote meetings, because we've done that in the past, that those meetings could actually be recorded as well. Um, but we're not on the hook for having to provide, spend money to be able to provide people the opportunity to record our meetings. So it kind of gets off the hook, us off of that.
An executive session.
And executive sessions do not get recorded, right?
Now, I, I noticed at the end of one of these, it says revised December seventeen. And the other two have older, have older dates.
Yeah.
I added to this, I mean, this will, will say whatever the date.
Yes.
The public participation one was, the three minutes was put in recently, so that's why it was more recently updated than the other ones.
Yeah.
But then we had to update it again to add some.
So one of them, when I was editing it, it, it still says like, one of them.
Oh, that's, yeah, I added it on there.
One says.
Just pretty much certainly, yeah. Honestly, I don't know why, it was just a little typing stuff. So that's what we'll say eventually when it gets. When, when we, yeah, and actually it won't say December because we'll have to go to a second.
Yeah, that's.
So probably January. I'm just, one. No, it's all, it's a good guess. Alright, I was actually trying to be proactive and, as the one date, so.
The meeting minutes in the online are actually from, I mean, the agenda is actually from twenty twenty-seven, I noticed.
Wow.
Wow.
It's just that the file name says December twenty twenty-seven. So we're all over the map, but it, it's just, it's not on the actual agenda. It's just the, now it was saved.
And then in your electronic packet, I put in, um, policies in there that were for review only, there was no changes to them. But again, that's just to get the dates on them updated so that we don't have a one that was last seen in two thousand nine. But there were no changes to any of those ones. You do not have copy of those, just the same paper, I did not print off every single one of them, because there were no changes. But they have electronic copies in the board packet that you guys have access to if you want to see them. But they have electronic copies in the board packet that you guys have access to if you want to see them.
Then I would look for a motion to move the first readings to a second reading.
I knew that we uh, advanced these three policies that presented for a second reading and approved the reviewed policies with no changes.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Then we have some in second reading?
Yes, so you have two policies that I presented to you um, last month. There were no changes recommended by the policy committee at this month's meeting. So if I bring them to you again, just for second reading as they were.
I like for motion. I mean, that we approved the second reading of policies, A C dash R and J R A dash E.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we've got aspire data presentation.
Our lone wolf.
So as Jen's getting set up, uh, we have some just information that's from that Jen blocked it up together that she's gonna run you through for aspire. Uh, but this is really kind of leading up. Again, we've kind of talked about this for the last few months and we're in the last year of our um, aspire initiative. And then moving out of that, as you remember, we had a number of understanding of some of our obligations. I mean, we were gonna perform post-grants. Um, so you're gonna see two agenda items here. That kind of made sense. We do the presentation. Um, and then you'll see a second agenda item following that up. Um, basically, it's just going to be um, trying to fulfill our, my recommendation to fulfill our obligation that we said at the end of the grant, um, we would, the RSU would fund one of the two positions that Melmac, uh, the J M G have committed to financially for the last technically six years. It was supposed to be five years at the time. So um, so that's kind of the rationale behind these next two agenda items. I'm sorry, as much as I.
Basically. Agenda item number eight, why Jen gets to stay. Agenda number nine, does Jen get to stay?
So number nine would be what we need to do is establish a position. So remember, we have, and that's why I put a job description um, that uh, Jen, Jordan, Christina and I have worked on. We got input from leadership teams, from administrators. Uh, but we have to be able to establish the position within the district first. And then we would go through our hiring process. So we typically work for that because now there's two and we both. Right, so we really, really do our hiring practices as necessary.
Gotcha. But the point of it is bringing those positions under our budget rather than.
Correct.
The provided funding. Gotcha.
So, okay, well, I'm not gonna spend a bunch of time telling you things you already know because you hear me say every month what we're doing. But I did wanna start on a couple of things that I know you do know, um, with some numbers. So um, these pictures just show some of the businesses and colleges that have been visited over the last couple of years. And our most recent count, we have a hundred and fifteen field trips, campus tours and business tours that we've done um, somehow connected to aspire. One of the good things that's happening is there were already trips before aspire, but also like I'm noticing this year there have been some trips that have been happening that we might have paid for, supported in the past, but they're figuring out, you know, how to make things sustainable. So even if it's simple things like um, we might not pay for lunch on campus anymore. We might take school lunch and that might have been the only cost to the trip. So everyone's been very conscientious about making those things sustainable. But um, so a hundred and fifteen field trips. And a hundred and thirty-one guest speakers was our best count. But again, that doesn't include other things that have been organized outside of, with nothing to do with aspire. And um, I took the numbers that we shared last May in the annual mailer that we do and did some updating to get them to be more current so far this year. So we have twenty-four students at the high school who have done either a short term or a full semester internship type experience. Nineteen career talks have been presented by uh, adults to our graduating seniors in fields that they had a specific interest in. Three virtual tours we offer, uh, twenty-six student activities that uh, Jordan and I have put together upon request over the past couple of years. Twelve student and family resources. Uh, we participated so far in twenty-one family events, more to come this year. We've purchased over three thousand books at this point that are from pre-K through grade eight. Twenty-four community-themed character element videos for uh, the students at Maus Lane. And at most recent count, the timelines that I offer to do for staff and for grade twelve students, we now have fifty-seven staff and community members and fifty-seven timelines now of uh, seniors. And uh, in terms of the things that teachers have been able to apply for, and we've been able to help arrange through working with Christina, there have been eighty-five educator professional development sessions so far. And we did a total of the number of businesses. We tried to, tried to use the funds to support local businesses. So we have purchased materials from over thirty local. So that's kind of what, where we've, we've gotten to. But you know, there there is more than than that. In thinking about sustainability, we've helped work with a team of teachers and Christina on helping take the life and career standards and make sure that those are noted whenever, for example, when someone's applying to go on a field trip. If it can be right on the form that says, how are you addressing aspirations? Then that's an easy thing to make sure that that continues happening. Um, the internship forms that I've worked on to make sure that that process is a little more robust and meets all of the, the lawyers are happy with the forms and um, and to make sure that we have the systems in place so the students are getting the most out of those experiences. Uh, and then another project that I um, worked on last year was this aspirational pathways idea, taking the, the career clusters. And I want to see if this is gonna should work. So I've talked to you about this, but I don't think I've, I've ever shown it to you because I don't usually project. But so we took the, this idea and we did it with eighth graders. We're going to do it again with eighth graders before they apply for their get their schedules for freshman year. And then we're also gonna have it done with the freshmen this year before they get ready for their sophomore schedule. So it's a process of where the kids, and this was an online flip book. Um, that I need, so they just did an update. So I'm also updating these one more time to get them to, they just did a national update of them. So we list the VHS requirements. And then we took the, the nationally established career clusters and helped students think about, if they don't know what it is they're interested in, or even if they do, they can look at these things. If they look to the left, they can see um, are you interested in certain things like assisting people or traveling? So that they can say, yeah, that fits me or it doesn't fit me. And then they can look at what's offered at VHS. And then what the credentials would be needed for an example of a job in that field. So this is the document that they, the eighth graders and again, the freshmen will look at as they're thinking ahead to their future planning. And there is actually, so it goes through each one, but I also wanted to note that there's another book, and this ties into what you were talking about earlier tonight with H C T C. So the eighth graders did just go this week, so they had their tour. And I found an update for them so that their booklet that was I made last year is current to show the new classes that are coming. Because the eighth graders, those classes will obviously be there when they get to be juniors. So we have a flip book for that too. And there's also paper copies available for kids, but it lists the programs in the same kind of style. And I've shown you copies of this when it first got created, what all the different certifications they can get, what careers that might lead to and the things that it could fit. So these things exist for students, but some, we just have to make sure that people don't forget that they exist, right? So there's, there's still work to do as far as um, keeping up with the process of keeping these things current, making sure that folks are remembering to incorporate then is there a field trip to the aspiration misses? And um, just like Mr. Jones said tonight, he's gonna apply for some funds. So thank, he knows it needs to be that well-rounded trip and it, and it'll tie into potential second, both secondary opportunities to make sure that those pieces stay current and then keeping the resources updated. So that's kind of where we're at. And we're just, you know, looking forward to see what will be the best use of um, having systems in place that'll be able to sustain this work going forward. And the goodness is a lot of the work can be done um, without a lot of outside money in terms of supply money because of the work that's been done to get it into local budget, but also um, we're trying to make sure we're purchasing things like the three thousand books, so that they'll, they'll be here. They're not going anywhere. There are materials and there's a bunch of, bunch of science equipment that's like this. So that, that, that stays on. And then we can focus more on keeping the things going that, that take a person to do, but not necessarily additional funds beyond the person. Questions?
I have, I have a question. One of your earlier slides said, I follow this slide.
Yeah.
Um, said you had twelve student and family resources. Give me.
Yeah, so something like this would be a student resource, like this book.
Okay.
Things that we've created that middle school asked for um, activities a couple of years ago.
So the family can also.
So we made six activities that could be used at school. But I post everything that I make also on our website. So a family could access them. And then sometimes when we go to a family night, we'll pull, we'll think about what are all the things we've created. For, so for example, last night was a math thing at the middle school. So I, I pulled five math resources that you could do at home and then posted it as a mini contest that I'll promote also through the newsletter. But that, so just to keep these things fresh. And we just had our steering committee look at the those six middle school documents last month so that we could refresh them and think about how they could be used outside of just the middle school to make sure people know what's available for resources.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? But we don't take any action.
No, this is just a, just a report. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
It's hard to, sometimes I think it's hard to capture when they, they do a job, but the amount of time and effort that goes into putting these things together to support what's going on in the classroom. And I think the, the thing that we learned, like these connections with businesses, you know, to get these internships, I mean, to, when we used to have our internship program, I mean, we would find them, but the students were really in charge of finding their own, right? Because teachers just didn't have the time to go out and do that. And school counselors really didn't have the time to go out and do that. And administrators had, were having a hard time to, so to make those meaningful and to find the right people and to be able to vet them and explain to the people that are doing the internships, like this is what we're looking for. This is experience we want them to. And then to see them show up to their students doing a presentation here at the high school. I mean, we're we're getting the community to buy in what's going on within our walls. And then, you know, that's just the internship program. Um, you know, I think what we're finding is that we need someone to help do all the legwork on the outside, to connect what's going on outside of our, our school to what's going on the inside of our school. Um, and you know, it's been, I think of the idea behind this, and we're seeing other schools jumping onto this. Brewer just had their, their kickoff um, three or four weeks ago. I guess it was early this month. Um, and we know that Skohegan has done it and they're, again, they're looking to go to other schools. The idea is to have, it's not a canned package, right? It was a grassroots initiative within our, saying, well, how do we make this work? Um, and I think the success that the reason I feel like I know it's been successful is that we have teachers, we have administrators, you know, we have adults, we have people business, but like, how are you gonna give this going when, when the grant's all over, right? So to me, that's people wanting it to be sustainable, speaking to the success that it's had.
And I didn't even mention the newsletter. So of course, one thing that uh, just this week, I had a student reach out to me and say, would it be possible to have something in the newsletter? And I was like, well, that's good. They're seeing it as a resource, as a way to share things in the community. So right, because that's just a really important piece.
How long we had it for?
Twenty, I started in twenty twenty, right? Well, I, I actually started in twenty twenty. It was posted in twenty nineteen and then everything was delayed.
Right. So our, the, the crescent, so we have had a longstanding um, partnership with Melmac and J M G. So we had J M G specialists both at the high school and at the middle school. And prior to um, aspire, we received Melmac grants. So we would get fourteen thousand dollars a year from Melmac, basically to do what the high school's doing right now. We would do college trips. But it was really high school-centered activities, you know, with a little bit of crossover to the middle school. Um, but it still was very much a group of teachers meeting, how can we use this money? You know, to do college fairs, to do college trips, do fasten nights. Again, something that was important, but it wasn't really still bringing in our stakeholders in the community to see what was going on. So Melmac and J M G had done this at Glorum, um, had started this and they actually sought us out and said, like, listen, we've seen what's happened with the bar program. We know what, how, the success you've had with your Melmac group. J M G is going really well here. You guys are a prime candidate to implement this initiative because they wanted to go to other school districts. And that's why, you know, we um, John Moody, the superintendent, Skohegan, myself, we went to the Bureau opening to speak because we've seen the success that it's had here. Um, so again, so that is the, this is, they gave us some big, some money. Oh, you have one more slide? Oh, that's right, yeah.
Because we can share a little bit, we do get the surveys for every year from um, this, the staff and the both grade students and some informal from eighth grade students. So I, I did actually wanna share a, a a compilation here of a couple of different slides. These were some of the things that we've been able to see that the outside evaluator shared uh, over the years. So what students have done, when people will ask us, well, how do you know if there's been a positive impact? Some things are hard to measure and something certainly hard to measure impacts. We will, like this year, the senior class was the eighth grade class that we started with. So they had aspire all through high school and we were able to survey them as eighth graders. So we'll have some good data this spring, but, but you know, at that point, we're
Right.
we're at the end. So this is to show by surveyed um, twelve graders. Most of what I learn in class is necessary for my success in the future. So this is a constant issue that we always say kids don't know why their learning matters sometimes. We're seeing a positive growth in that direction. Um, discuss careers with a teacher. You know, that is great. And then informational interview with an employer. So a really high increase there. That has to do with bringing back the um, the career fair. So now, you know, we have that on a rotation. And then asking the teachers, and this is a district-wide one. I integrate real-world learning experiences in the content I teach. And so I don't know if you can read these numbers, but if you take into account everyone, all means administrators, um, which sometimes people like administrators and support it's staff of certain types will say, I don't day-to-day do this work. It is part of their normal day. So that sometimes brings the number down a little bit. So it's sixty-two percent. When you look at just teachers, this past spring, teachers across the district said um, seventy-one percent. So there's still, those are, that's a good number, but there's still room for that to grow. That really is the last slide.
Josh, how does this affect our calculations on the Q and A two seventy-nine? We're just gonna fit into that and is it gonna affect our?
It won't. This would be a local, locally funded position.
This would be a locally funded position. It's not going to have any effect for or against our public funding.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's no, I checked with Glorum on that. I actually looked at some different kind of rainstorms, some different ways of maybe seeing one of the organizations that is already funding this position would wanna continue to hire the person we would contract with them. Um, but it doesn't, it doesn't really impact it because they're not talking so into this like a teacher or an ed tech. So they would be outside of the two seventy-nine. So it would be a.
So it's not considered a guidance position?
It is not. It says we're already in travel.
Okay.
Yeah, that's exactly why.
It'll be completely outside. It'll be completely outside the two seventy-nine.
What do you boost out?
So. His was more. Yes, no, he did more career-based interest. I mean, he was connecting with small groups of students. It was not school-wide. Okay. So he had a small group. Okay, yeah. And he did, he would like give the ASVAP and do, you know, he would develop some career interest type stuff and then connect those students to.
Much smaller.
Right. No, I think this is more of, again, I really see this as much as we're. Right. No, I think this is more of, again, I really see this as much as we're connecting our business partners, our community stakeholders to students, this is also a promotional thing for the RSU, right? So we're, we're promoting successes. We're showing what's going on within the school, which in turn enhances all of our program. I think the reason you see so many people volunteering for robotics is because robotics is doing well. But not just they were doing well, we're promoting it, right? People know that it's doing well. So people want to be part of it, right? We've seen a lot of more students want to take part of internships because they're seeing success. They're seeing it's not just, I'm going to be a teacher's aide and photocopies and papers and run errands and, you know, or we're, we're getting out into architectural designs, you know, they're, they're reading with them. They're going to real estates and doing actually closing on houses and going through that whole process. And they're working at water waste treatment plants and they're just getting these really robust experiences that we're forcing them to talk about afterwards and, and, and say what they learned. You know, I, to me, and again, that's just the high school. I mean, our pre-K students, our kindergartners, they're going to the local pizza shop and, you know, again, they're being experienced. They've been exposed to.
Jobs.
Right? You know, and so.
So this position would be a, a contract position and wouldn't be going through any of the negotiated contracts.
It will not be part of the, either of the CBAs.
Correct.
It's not an administrator contract, but it would be, we would create a co, a work agreement.
We would create a work agreement for that.
Wouldn't be on a teacher's salary.
No.
The thing, and then that like JMG, JMG also.
We don't pay for JMG. We just, we contract JMG. They're not a RSU twenty-five employee. This would be an RSU twenty-five employee. The reason I brought it outside of the teacher's contract is solely around certification. Because, you know, this position isn't necessarily one that I would think that has to have a teacher certification on it. I mean, it very well could be, and I think a lot of people will have teacher certifications for that. But what we named it, and, and again, the name was, I think, the toughest part that we had. We were trying to, to figure out exactly what we wanted to be, cause it's not, you know, Jen and Jordan have two very distinct roles inside of the aspire program. And part of what Jen does, we identified as the sustainable piece. And part of what Jordan does, we identified as a sustainable piece. So we're really merging it into what we think is going to be the best impact for our students. And, you know, we clearly identified there's a community outreach component to this that we, that has to be there, right? That's going to be front and center. Um, and then everything else needs to be just tied to aspirations. That doesn't mean it's just post-secondary. It's not just a four-year, two-year. I mean, it's connecting them to what they want to do at an early age and helping teachers bridge that into their classrooms. That may not be a teacher that is the best student candidate for this person. So if I keep it outside of the teacher contract, I don't have to worry about certification issues. And it gives us a little more flexibility in our.
Well, it could have been somebody that was a teacher and then, but certification has lapsed.
Yeah. Well, and they could have cert, and, and not including teachers could not be the first. But I didn't, also didn't want to limit my scope to.
So how does the funding work for this then? Does it just come out of our budget or do they have a separate budget line for funding, for like resources they need and all that stuff?
It would come out, go into our student support services cost center, but it will be locally funded. It would just be local money that we would fund this with.
So you have a proposed budget for that as well, for the costs, not just the position, but the, uh, also the extra costs that would incur.
So that's what we, there, there'll be little to no budget. I mean, that's what we've really worked this year on is to make it sustainable. We had already built into the high school budget. The, we did it over the course of two years to be able to get the activities that they do, like their fast for nights, their, um, their tours, their college fairs. So we built that component to the local budget. There'll be a little bit more, again, you're talking a little bit of supplies, but not, it really, this is just the position itself. We would hire and we'd have to, I'd have to negotiate that piece. I couldn't tell you exactly what that number is. It's not going to be an administrator salary. It's going to be, but it's not inside that contract either. It would be based on the experience of. And again, it, the process, I really have to have the position before I could advertise for the board is creating the position. But we're not looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, if that's what your question was.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not.
I would hope not. No, I think that was number we were supposed to begin with, but I was wondering where the number was landing, uh, you know, or what that, you know.
I mean, I do foresee there being a small working budget for this person to be able to do. And I think we've seen the positive impact of this program.
Absolutely.
So.
But I mean, it would be a salary and it would be benefits.
Yeah. Yeah. There's a salary benefit. The position itself is going to be ninety-six percent of what Aspire. Cause there, there'll be like some incidentals, other stuff that we would add in here. You know, again, PR is something that we need to continue to do because of some of the PR efforts that we've done. We've seen that return on the investment on the number of students that we've had for tuition students coming into the high school that are specifically coming for some of these type of activities. So there, there is a return on this investment. You don't always see it dollar for dollar, but.
Bottom line, your recommendation is, if I'm understanding correctly, that there is a net positive benefit overall to the school, to our students and to the community from this program. And it benefits us and suits us to continue.
Yes, we, we agreed, like I said, in our memorandum of understanding, when we signed on to this program, we said, are you really going to as an RSU? If that wasn't there, I still would be making this recommendation to you, if that answers your question. Good. So, I mean, I'm, I'm making it because we had, we had made this agreement six years ago when we signed on and we accepted the money. But I would also be making this recommendation no matter what.
Well, then I, try to, judgment, I would say, uh, I move that we add one full-time employment position for community outreach and aspirations coordinator for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
I thought we didn't need to take action today. Will we do on this?
We were taking action.
Gotcha. All right. Cause I thought we were, then I know we weren't. Now, yeah.
Yeah. Sorry. I apologize.
That's right. No.
Oh, so we have a motion and a second?
I did.
All those in favor? All those opposed? One post and next. Thanks very much.
You know what? You don't get any more here but a boss.
But it's time for us to move into executive. Zoom to MRS A title one, type five, six, A. The discussion relative to the superintendent's evaluation.
That means I have to go.
We want to do the calendar firm or we.
I think we're the only people here, so.
I'll see you.
I do know our public.
If I remember, I would be honest.
We'll have to ring it back. Very good. One second. Well, actually so moved. What you guys said, so we're going, and then David will say.
All right, we will come back and we are back from executive session. Now it is time for calendar and announcements.
Gosh, would you like to?
Yes. So we have curriculum committee is not going to happen.
February 6.
So that's going to go to February 6.
Is it February 6 or 7?
I thought it was 6.
We'll push that out to where we'll have to get that. We'll have another board meeting to get that up for Thursday. Policy committee will be January 14 at 5:30 at the central office. Finance committee will be the 21st at 5:30 year before the school board meeting. Our monthly meeting, regular meeting will be January 21st at 6 o'clock. Facilities, we have changed and that is the correct date. That's going to be January 6th at 4 o'clock at the plane auditorium. That's going to coincide with our meeting with BACIS. And then the ASPIRE is going to be on January 2nd at 5 o'clock at Central Office.
And do we have the negotiations?
So we had talked about on the 6 of just our group getting together and just kind of having an organizational meeting on. We're looking at January, you can say January 6th at 6 o'clock.
Yeah.
I'll put that out.
6 o'clock.
Where? Central office.
Central.
Yeah.
I didn't keep any.
I'll be here for 4 o'clock and then that's why.
They're gone. You have to talk to Jim. Jim has the last five.
All right, I would look for a motion to adjourn. I move to Oider.
Second.
Question in the second. All those are good.
Third.
Okay, thank you very much. See you in January.